Okay, thank you. Okay, the minute before we adopt the agenda, I mean move to adopt the agenda for the July 12th board meeting with the following addendum. Correction of item eight personnel recommendation supplemental. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the added addendum or the correction? A second?
Second.
We added anything to the supplemental consent after it was posted. So we had to do an amendment to a minimum or an addendum to amend the supplemental consent.
Are we allowed to say the name? Fishing anyways?
I'm sorry, what was that Paul?
I have, I have no. I've had to review that particular one.
Yeah, is it just the name change or is it a different?
So we added a new assistant principal at Emerald Hills who was just hired yesterday.
Good clarification, thanks. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Before we continue, is Director Norris online with us? She couldn't be here this evening, she wasn't feeling well, but was gonna try to zoom in. Okay, welcome Director Norris. That leads us to superintendent comments.
Yeah, hey, thanks for being here, it's July, it's sunny outside. You could probably be at a thousand different places, but thanks for spending some time with us. So speaking of administrative hires, Ashley Garcia was hired yesterday for the Emerald Hills position and you're gonna meet her in August. We've had a couple other fantastic hires, but one we'd love to introduce to you in person. And Dr. Arment is going to come up and introduce our new director of technology.
Thank you, Dr. Dent, members of the board. Brings me great honor to introduce our new director of technology, Robin Rich. He has been with us for almost two years. I'll say a few things and then I'll give him the mic to kind of share some things. Started off serving in the United States Navy. From there, worked with Franklin Pierce School District, Evergreen School District, Federal Way School District, and then finally here in Sumner Bonnie Lake. So he's made immediate impact in the two years since I've had to oversee technology and watch him work. We're excited to have him and I'll let him share a little bit, so.
Thank you, I appreciate you all and I especially appreciate the leadership and stuff like that of giving the trust of that great department. We have an unbelievable high quality morale. We have great aspirations and I can't wait to help the students of this district. I'm completely student focused. I spend most of my time when I'm not at my desk inside the schools. Very few people can say that, I say that and I take pride in it and stuff. But I literally wander the halls to find out what is working, what is not working. And I, that's the pulse that I need to be innovative and try to bring different angles that gets the most out of the kids. I believe in equity, but equity in different ways. I don't believe that handing everyone a Chromebook, it creates equity. There are students that might need three devices to create that exact same equity and I'm all for that. I want everyone to have the same chance as everyone else. So, and I'm very excited and like I've told my team a million times and everyone else, people don't know how good this place is. You don't know what you don't know if you've never been anywhere else. This is an unbelievable school district, the board runs it amazing and Lori is a saint at this, so. I appreciate the chance and the opportunity and I guarantee you I will not fail. Fun fact, 27 trips to Sturgis and never ever trailered my bike. I was 15 years old before I finally figured out that I shouldn't be a bull rider, I was too big, so I focused on roping. That's about it.
And then your bass just went fishing, didn't you?
I do, I have an annual trip that I spent seven days and I fish seven different lakes. And I literally go from lake to lake to lake to lake and it's, it's turned into the greatest adventure of my life. I enjoy it more than, it's just peace. And I love, I'm a bass fisherman, I will pull my rod out of the water if I see a salmon close to it or a trout. I'm terrible at it, I just want bass, I just do, I just do and stuff. And I really like small mouth, not large mouth. But, yeah, and my favorite lure is a rat. 11 inches long, pull it through the water, it wiggles its tail, whacks its feet and it's like it's just going across. And you cannot believe how big the fish come after those things, they go crazy for it, so. It's a specialty, you, yeah. It's, I usually average a three day ride to Sturgis, but I have been with big groups that we've left San Diego and drove straight through. 22 hours. And literally the only time you have a break is you're waiting for, you're with a big pack, you're waiting for everybody to get gas. So you can get as much coffee in you as you can before you get back on the road again. And stuff, but I enjoyed, I enjoyed the, the ride and I enjoyed the the foothills around Sturgis, that is why I got to Sturgis. Know it and stuff, I spent, I put 2,700 miles on my bike inside the last Sturgis trip and I was there for three days. So I didn't spend much time in town. That's just me. Yes, I thank you guys.
Still kind of stuck on the rat. Is it like a real rat? Is it a real rat? No. Thank you. Okay. 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 I know. Okay. That's a little horrifying. That's, thank you for clarifying, that's, that's good. Okay, all right, well, thank you. I, I know, I feel like we should probably move on. Before you, before the rat and now the duckling, you said something that stuck with me was that that's your peace. And as we head into board comments, I just want to say that I hope as we're in the month of July, we've wrapped up the school year, we haven't started gearing up for the next school year. I do hope that people are finding their peace in this district because I don't think anyone knows more than this board how hard people in the Summer Bonnie Lake School District work. They are dedicated, they give their all, and I really truly hope that everyone's able to find some peace this summer, whatever fills your bucket, whatever fills you with joy. I hope that you're feeling refreshed and renewed a bit before we kick off another amazing school year in a month. Any other board comments? Paul?
We did have our policy committee meeting today, right before this meeting. We usually have it like the first Monday in a month, but because it's July, we did it this way. The prohibition, the policy for prohibition for racial and ethnic harassment, I think is to a place where the administration is gonna start getting some feedback on it, so. Look forward to seeing the feedback that's provided. And I wish I could get, I'm working to get to that piece. Right now I've got some C do's I'm working on and I'll leave it at that. Yeah, they're not underwater running, so.
All right. Thank you for your work on the policy committee. Rick?
I'll just add that I was trying to look back at the calendar and see, kind of as we wrapped up the school year and all the graduations and everything, I was looking back to see like what other, you know, events that I was able to attend. I did actually have one that I attended between the last board meeting and that was a fifth grade graduation at Daffodil Elementary and, you know, we see the, the big graduations at the high school and everything. But to go watch a fifth grade graduation is just so cool to see the excitement and probably some of the little bit of trepidation of heading off to middle school. But that was a really wonderful program that they put on and really cool to see, so that was, that's my update.
Thank you, Kevin. All right. At this time, we are moving into audience comments. Do we have anyone signed up to speak this evening?
So next we're moving on to the audience comments portion of the meeting. The board recognizes the value of public comment on education issues and the importance of involving members of the public in its meetings. Comments from the public are taken under board advisement and may or may not receive action at a future meeting. Topics including charges or complaints against employees, employment or dismissal of a personnel or a personnel, acquisition of real estate, lawyer-client relationships, campaigning and parameters for negotiations should not be discussed in audience comments. Other information, questions or problems can usually be addressed by district staff. The audience comment portion will end when all registered speakers have been heard. We ask that everyone adhere and understand these guidelines. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing or any other form of support or non-support be used. The board will not respond to comments but will take them under advisement. Speakers should be courteous and professional. Please refrain from using profanity, vulgar language, threatening or defamatory comments. As a reminder, individuals are not permitted to name a specific staff member, board member or student during public comments. Failure to do so may result in the board president or designate interrupting or ending the comment. The audience comment process is as follows. Only speakers who registered by noon on Tuesday, July 11th will be heard. If you are providing in-person public comment, when your name is called, please come up to the podium and state your name. Please address comments to the school board as a whole. Individuals have three minutes to speak. The assistant superintendent will signal speakers when one minute remains. Our first audience comment is from Steve McCoy.
How about now? Okay, it's a press and hold function. Okay. My name is Steve McCoy. A recurring complaint heard at these meetings is about the mistreatment of people. Often it is student to student, sometimes it is teacher to student and complaints are also leveled at you, the directors, demanding you fix it. Controlling behavior is beyond the capability of the board or the school administration. In fact, it is impossible. Behavior can only be controlled by the individual. Many times the complaints includes demands for punitive action, as if punishment can improve the outcome. Sometimes punishment can deter, sometimes it is corrective, sometimes it is oppressive, but punishment cannot produce good behavior. That is up to the individual. Isn't that what we all want? Respectful and positive behavior? This is an extraordinary experiment, introducing a new religion which believes we can improve by discarding and deconstructing our history. The belief is we can have tolerance by punishing anyone who is intolerant. The belief is we can have equity through discrimination. The belief is we can have social harmony without common values. We are being led down a Bud Light path where minority are trying to force the majority into their belief system. This is religious bigotry. We believe in the constitutional rights of free speech and the choice to believe what you want. We know that censoring someone for their belief isn't tolerance. You are being asked to punish free speech. The school's job per our state constitution is to promote, teach and encourage the values that enable a healthy environment for everyone. The law RCW 28A dot 150 dot 211 titled Values and Traits Recognize reads, "The legislature also recognizes that certain basic values and character traits are essential to individual liberty, fulfillment and happiness. However, these values and traits are not intended to be assessed or to be standards for graduation. The legislature intends that local communities have the responsibility for determining how these values and character traits are learned as determined by consensus at the local level. These values and traits include the importance of one, honesty, integrity and trust. Two, respect for self and others. Three, responsibility for personal actions and commitments. Four, self-discipline and moderation. Five, diligence and a positive work ethic. Six, respect for law and authority. Seven, healthy and positive behavior. And eight, family as the basis of society." The school policy number 2336 and federal laws says the school is to set aside today to teach good citizenship and the constitution, supporting the idea of teaching historical values. Not everyone thinks you are doing a terrible job. We can always improve and these are the values that can help us.
That ends the audience comment portion of the meeting.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, that moves in us into policy matters. We have one recommendation that's up for second reading and adoption. The recommendation is as follows. The district administration recommends the board adopt these district policies in accordance with policy 1310, Adoption and Amendment of Policies and Bylaws of 3211 Gender-Inclusive Schools. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Deb. Any discussion?
Just like I said last time, there's a sentence that we've added to this particular policy that directs people who have concerns about student records to the proper policy on student records.
Thanks, Paul. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We talked about, did we actually take a vote on consent? Okay, we talked about it.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
You're right, okay, we're gonna go back, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items as listed? A second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, thanks Kevin. All right. Let's get back on track here. Thank you for having my back. If I make any more mistakes, let me know. Um, all right, we have two policies up for first reading, proposed strategic plan evaluation and student records. Those are in your packets as well as procedure student records. Also for information only is the budget status report for May 31st, 2023, which leads us to the budget update presentation. From Beth Bang Parkinson, Chief Finance and District Operations Officer. Welcome, Bang.
Board of Directors, Superintendent Den, tonight I'm going to walk you through the preliminary budget for 2023-24. I want to thank our superintendent and the cabinet members, this year's quiet year, to go through their budget process. Especially we want to align with the strategic plan to develop this budget. And also thank our group, HR and Finance Core Team. They work very hard to develop this budget, so I would like to recognize them. So this is the agenda. As usual, I just kind of put the timelines and the process, you probably see it before, and then go with individual fund. Especially the general fund, I will go a little bit deeper. So this is the timeline, basically it make make their budget calendar. What month doing what? So I just kind of draw it out like a roadmap, so we can see that what do we do? How do we do it during this budget development? And this is the process that we involve everybody. All the department, all the building administrators and of course cabinets and HR and Finance, all those people involved into this process. And all those revenue expenditures staffing is driven by the enrollment projection. How many kids you have, how much money you have and how many staff you need to have. So that's the process we will do from the beginning of December, January until now. That many months we put together this process to become a budget that we can adopt next year, for next year. So here's the transportation vehicle fund, these funds, basically we just purchased yellow bus. So we project revenues $531,000 and will spend $935,000 to buy all the buses we can. And, and, and we still have one, $514,000 because we don't get fun until the end of August. That is kind of frustrating because we cannot buy early on. We have to wait for one more year to get the money in and that is very difficult. So this is our plan to purchase. Last year we also have a plan, but again, the funding coming in late, we order early. But to this point, last year we order, we do not get it until the following year. That's supply chain problem. So we only get one bus this year. So we plan on putting whatever we ordered that we didn't get in this budget, so we have that to spend for this year. It's, it's a little bit troublesome for the supply chains. So you can see that we only get one bus. We ordered several bus last year and so far we only get one bus in. So those bus that we order, we will continue to order more, but we have to create some capacity for next year to pay for the rest. That's why we said that we will buy six more because we already ordered some for last year and it will become, well, I said last year means that current year for next year. So we will have four buses out of the depreciation list. And currently we have 36 buses on the list for depreciation. But some buses out of depreciation doesn't mean that they're not driving, available driving, they still running just like normal, but they just off the list for generate revenue. So that is 63 of them. Then current year we surplus trade in or even sold some of them, five of them, the bus. So basically the inventory, we have 63 bus. And this is our four-year plans, pretty much consistent. Every year it's like that, you collect to the end of the year's money. So we plan on buying next year. That service fund, this fund is basically we collect the levy to pay for the bond that we run the bond, sell the bond and construct school and remodel school and now we are paying back the debt. Every year we pay principal and interest. So we collect 22.9 million and we'll pay almost 22 millions of the debt. And to the end we will get 12.7 million ending fund balance. This is our four years, we follow the payment schedule and we end the years as consistent have the ending fund balance. ASB fund is the students' fund. Every single school have their ASB and submit their budget to us and we combine all those budget and put into the whole budget as ASB budget. So the revenue, when they submit, combine, everybody submitted is 2.9 million. Whether we collect 2.9 fundraising, 2.9 million or not, probably not. But that's the budget capacity that they put in. Same expenditure, 2.7 million, you think that they will spend 2.7 million, probably not. But again, this is budget capacity. To the end they will have $988,000 as ending fund base, which is pretty consistent as a current year. So this is their four years submission and projections. Capital project fund, capital project fund is mainly doing construction, major repair, remodel, that kind of fund. And this fund have several different revenue coming in. It could be state match, could be bond, could be capital levy and it could be interest. When we have fund balance in the bank, we generate some interest. We have impact fee, we have E rate. I mean, we have a lot of things just coming in in this fund. But it's no longer big because we don't have bond. So we have only 8.68 million's revenue that we expect coming in next year. Then we have to spend 38 millions to do all the projects, finish up everything for those two big project and continues on with the project that we lay out. You will see the projects eventually. And then we have transfer in means that in capital project fund, transfer in means the money coming in from general fund. Transfer out, money going out, using the tech levy to pay for the operation part of the tech levy salary to the general fund. Cause general funds paying out first, they reimburse back to general fund. But this 16.6 million is coming from general fund back here to capital project fund for all the project that the board's already approved previously. So if we don't have anything, if we do what we do and finish up the project we said we would, we will get only 2.89 million to the end. It's very small amount in capital project fund. So this is the major projects and it include the SO fund. We set aside SO fund to do some air quality improvement, still continues on. And then we have some traffic improvement between Mountville and Bonnie Lake High. Also the Lick Ridge Middle School schooling. We have Bonnie Lake Stadium, turf field track and lining replacement. And we also have the generators for those schools and the support servers order already, but it's been a year, we still don't get that. So we don't know when we will get it and really set up for that. Again, supply chain's problem and we always have to prepare for like cross-years budget. Last year we budget that and this year we have to budget again because we don't know when they're going to come. And we also prepare for this, probably already work on. The Sumner High School elevators going really bad and we need to replace it. We have only one elevator, if we don't fix it, we cannot use it. For a lot of staff and, and students need to go using that elevator. And then we relocate the portables from Sumner High to Bonnie Lake High and Tahale. I think so already moved, right Lori? I believe so. But we still have a lot of infrastructures need to set it up. And then Tahale land purchase, we just set aside some money needing for the future. And also some technology project like access control and other device replacement. So those are capital projects, major projects. And again, four years, just project it down for four years and we don't have money if we don't have the bond. Operating fund is the general fund and we will go deeper. Go over individual line items here. Uh, go over individual line items here from enrollment, projections, revenue, and expenditure. We'll walk you through in those. So enrollment. Yes, we have enrollment goal, which is very unusual. This good issue is so lucky. We have kids coming back as um pre-pandemic time. This year, we project pretty much consistent with last year or current year. This is very conservative approach. We may have more actually coming in. But when you budget less, when it come less, you will have trouble. But if you budget more, when it come in less, we have trouble. So uh in a budget standpoint, we need to be very conservative when we come to enrollment projection. Again, I just mentioned that enrollments drive revenue staffing. So how many kids we have, how many teachers we should have? And that is the models that we set up three years ago, four years ago. So this is the projection and I hope that it happened the way it is. And this general fund, you can see that the revenue is lower than the expenditure. I'll expand it later. So revenue projected a hundred seventy nine point five million. But this expenditure, we budgeted a hundred eighty two million. And again, we send off sixteen, six sixteen point six million out to capital project, as I mentioned previously. Send from general fund to capital project for those project you approved with resolution. Then we anticipate that end of this year, twenty two, twenty three, we will have forty three million. Then end twenty three, twenty four. If this is happening exactly what we put in, we only get twenty three million to the end. Because we transfer a lot of money out for capital project to do all the projects. So this is a project that exactly what I just listed before in the capital project side for major project. And this is end, this is add up the sixteen point six million project. Same thing, just repeated, but it's in general fund side with resolution. So in general fund, what's the change? We get some apportionment increase. It's because we have a little bit more revenue from enrollment and also inflation. We have IPD in increase in salary funding in the funding side, not the expenditure side, but the funding side. So we get five point three million increase compared with last budget. And then we have two point five million levy, again inflation. And special ed, you know, special ed, we have a new bill this year passed. But it give us very slightly increase. Based on the bill because they kind of phase out several years to give you where they promised, but it's still not fully funded. We all know that. Special ed is getting very expensive. So SO funds expiring right now. The SO choose expiring this next month. Or or September two thousand twenty three. SO three will expire uh September two thousand four, twenty four. This is expenditure here. What's the change? Increase certificate salary, almost seven million. We increased a lot of of staffing. At the same time, we increase based on individual, I mean not individual, uh the certificates um contract. That's increase IPD. The IPD increase from the state fund is not equal to the IPD we increase in this expenditure. Because we hire more certificates than we are funded. We pay more certificate than we are funded. That is the levy coming in to help. Then the salary from us classifieds also increase, one point six million. Again, we have so many contracts we have to fulfill, and that is the increase. The employee benefit decrease because the retirement rates decrease. We don't get that funding, we reduce the expenditure. Same thing. MSOCs increase quite a bit this year. We have a lot of contractual services. Those are expensive. Inflation, expensive. A lot of prices increase. When you review those contract, you can see that it just so shocking increase. So this is the staffing change. We uh finally fill the secondary curriculum director. And then we also hired the new director of safety and security, but we reduce assistant principal at Sumner High School. Basically, it's just trade. And we create a new program this year, JROTC, that require true certificate and true classified officers. So we increase those, and we have a whole list of special ed teachers, special specialist and SLP OTPT, those we hire a lot on those. We open three more DLC classroom. We need a lot of um teachers. And then we also um extended one more year of the special ed director. Last year was the one year only, but this year, we extend one more year. And then the special ed online instructor, we had that. In the last, last two years, we pay out of SO fund. Now, we pay using the special ed funding to continues this position. So we have kids really need those. Then we also open up for secondary TOSA for one year only. And we reduce the POSA positions. Uh, in a classified side, as I mentioned, the the DR um the JROTC, we have two officer, and we have one more ground technician, custodian for the phase one for one year only. And then we have all the paras for the DLC that we create new classroom. And we create two uh campus safety officers for one year only at Mountview and Sumner High. So how do we allocate our money, our budget? If you have one dollar, eighty percent, eighty cents, actually eighty cents is all spent in the classroom. Because this is our education industry, and we pay almost everything to the direct to the classroom. And then the indirect classroom support is sixteen cents and only four cents for the rest. Very minimal for all the operational courses. This is the required slides that I have to present every year. You see it over and over every years is how much the state fund us, MSOCs, how much we spend? You cannot, the purpose of this is you cannot use MSOCs to pay for salary. That's their purpose. That's why every year, we are required to present to the board for these slides to show that we actually do not use the MSOCs for FTE or for staffing. This is our ending fund balance. Ending fund balance means that to the end of two thousand twenty three, twenty four, if we say what we say, we do what we do, exactly what we budgeted, we will have twenty three point four millions to the end, and it's equivalent to twelve point eight eight percent. So in this fund balance ter- categories, all those like restricted, we still have some child nutrition services money set aside. And we have some categorical carryover means that like lab and um CTE money that you cannot spend on anything but those programs. So it's called restricted. Then some non-spendable uh fund balance means that you have inventory. You have some prepaid things that is not really cash. It's the items that worth that money. You still have to report them as fund balance. It's the wealth of the district. Then you have some committed fund balance here is because we were thinking we may not finish all those projects that we said we would. And this is probably left over to the end of the year. So we still set aside the money, continues on to finish those. Then some aside of fund balance encumbrance means that you will have some open purchase order that you have not paid. You already ordered, but it's not coming in. You have to prepare to pay for it because you already ordered. It's just you're not paying yet. And then curriculum adoption. Kelly, I always remember you set aside some money for her to replace the curriculum because every year she have all the schedule down five years that what type of curriculum need to replace which year. So I have to prepare this money for her to do that. And cybersecurity, this is very important to to prepare for this. If anything happened to us, we have some money to deal with the aftermath recovery. We don't want to go there, but you never know. We never know. So then also, we have a lot of major equipment that suddenly broke down. You have to repair, replace, remodel. Those need to set aside money. And then school funds, some school fund have some carryover, will have to prepare for that as well. So all those doesn't have to be in the aside of fund balance. And then the board have five percent minimum fund balance. We have to prepare to set aside as well. So whatever left is less than five millions fund balance that you can use for whatever unaside. So this is a four years projected um as usual. And we uh don't know what it going to lead in the future. There's a lot of unforeseen events, so we just do what we can do to project four years down. This is a graph of the four years projection. This is the part I want to um really bring out your attention here. What's our challenge currently or even in the future? It's inflation. Like I mentioned that, when you look at all the prices we are purchasing right now, increase quite a bit. Even go to a grocery store, fifty dollars is nothing. Probably one bag of things coming in the past was probably three bags of grocery. So inflation is a big deal to us, and it costs a lot of money. And we also have another chance is the labor market shortage. And a lot of competitive out there with other districts surrounding. So we always have to fight for that. Bus drivers, so far, we still have a lot of open position that we cannot fill. Paras educator. We have a lot of paras position we are not able to to fill. Skilled maintenance workers, that's even harder to fill because we do not, I mean, government don't pay compared with private sector. Especially they have federal uh provincial regions that they get when they do as like HVACs or all those maintenance skilled workers. So we are in a very disadvantage in here, and we struggle with this to fill this position. The leave absence still very high right now, and that means that we have to pay a lot of substitute. And then special ed never keep up with the expenditure. We have a lot of high need expenditure that we need to pay. Lot of paras one-on-one if we can find them. If we, again, I said, if we spend or hire all those position that we put it in the budget, we'll be in trouble. Because our expenditure higher than the revenue. I'm going to get there. So again, I talk about a little bit of the supply chain challenge that we are facing. Transportation is also a problem. We still underfund. So why I said here in balanced budget, but then we still have high fund balance? I mean, I hear a lot of people always compare, you have a lot of money, you have high fund balance. Why you're not doing this? Why you're not doing that? Well, I'm truly want to expand this clearly so that people understand a little bit. As I list out all those ending fund bands, why fund bands is not always available? Because there's a lot of restriction that we cannot use. Now, why my budget is not balanced? But then at the same time, I have fund balance left on the table. Because there's a lot of position I cannot find to fill, but I cannot not budget them. You have to budget the transportation drivers. If you don't budget it, when they come in, you don't have money to pay for it. You have to budget for it. We want to hire them so that we don't have to pay for uh double bus run supervision, right? We don't need to pay for overtime for whoever want to take on. I mean, we pay a lot of overtime. But we still save some money because we don't fully hire everybody. Not that we don't want to, but we can't. We we couldn't find people. So that is my challenge right now is I don't balance my budget, but at the same time, I have the high fund balance. It's very unusual in my twenty-something years experience. Um, this several years, it's not just happen to Sumner Bonny Lake exploitation. I talked with a lot of other district. Of course, some district to the um the north side because of funding issue and the enrollment decline, then they have budget uh reduction. Let alone others like us may have some um enrollment increase or maybe a little bit financially stabilized. They also have the same problem we have. We cannot balance a budget, but you have fund balance. So this is really a not good budgeting and not a good situation to be it. But we don't have a choice. It happened. So we don't have a choice to do anything like that. It's not my favorite situation, but we will have to deal with it. So next step, um we're going to have a public hearing next month and have the board adopt the budget on August sixteen, two thousand twenty three. Any question? Okay, let's see. Go back. Chinese, next step.
Next step, same thing, okay. There is something better, but next step.
You see the one, one, the one, one line?
Uh huh.
That's the one, like next one step.
Okay. Well, thank you. I I thought you included it on here for a reason. I I liked the reason.
Just for fun.
Well, for fun and to expose us all to
And people can learn Chinese.
Yeah, that's right. By the end, maybe. All right, first question. If we could go back to the staffing changes. So maybe you can answer the question, maybe not. Maybe somebody else could.
I'll try.
Uh, but I s- I'm excited and happy that there's additional campus safety officers being added. Um, I'm a little curious of why it was two at these particular schools. Why were they chosen and not other schools?
Uh, we have enrollment increased quite a bit in um Mountville Middle School compared with other middle school. We have eight hundred something, eight hundred, at least eight hundred sixty kids compared with seven hundred, like they have a hundred more kids than other middle school. But we won't, we'll only try one year because we don't know the enrollment will change next year. That's why we do not want to commit as ongoing position. And uh Sumner High is because they have the the building phase one. So it's difficult for for those campus safety go back and forth. We have only two there. We have only two there, so we add one again, one time only.
Um we also added one more at Bonnie Lake High School also because of their increased enrollment. So each high school will have three campus safety officers, three assistant principals, five counselors, full-time dean, athletic director. Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good answer. Wait, I get to, I get to. Now, let's go ahead and go on down and it'll come back to me.
You actually asked my question. So I was curious about that decision and how that.
Yeah.
The campus safety.
Yeah.
Officers was delegated.
All right, I'll go. Um, thank you for the presentation. I commend you and your staff on just a great job. In budgeting and making sure you budget conservatively so that when things happen that we're all in a good position. Um I did notice on some of the later slides when you were at the total budget, talking about the things that you've prepared for in emergencies, you know? So that when things happen like cybersecurity threats or other emergencies and things that come up that you can't anticipate. I appreciate that you've planned for that. Um and so I don't really have a question other than to say thank you. Um and I also just wanted to make a clarifying observation mostly just for anybody watching online. Um the one slide that we had that showed the major projects list, I just want people to understand that is not the entire list. That the law list is much longer than that, and that was just our main highlights. So there are a lot of other things going on.
That's a good point because this is only for twenty-three, twenty-four. We have a long list that I previous month that present for. And I even put that the resolution number, right? So we have a longer list, we we put set aside twenty-four something million, if you recall. This is only for twenty-three, twenty-four that we anticipate we will work on this project during this time. That's why we talk about we're not cha- uh uh transfer the money until. The expenditure occurred. Then we will transfer the money. So that's why twenty-four point something million is still in general fund. Right now, until whatever happened, we'll transfer every month. Until they they finished. But we're not transferred all the twenty-four out from general fund to capital project. Because something will change. We don't have to go back again because we are not allowed to transfer back. From capital project to general fund, only the other way, but not this way.
So I just appreciate that we have a positive general fund balance and that we are headed in the right direction.
Does Deb have a question at all? She raised her hand or anything?
Not at this time, but of course Bing, you did a wonderful job. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you too.
Thank you.
All right, second question is on the general fund projected ending fund balance.
Yeah.
So it's it's this one here. After your state M S O X.
It will be.
Yeah, page thirteen, but she might not have pages on there. That's that one right there.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you. And so my second question and my fourth question are on this slide, but.
Okay.
The second question is, and again, you might not be able to answer it, but maybe Kelly Den can answer it.
Okay.
Uh that's the curriculum adoption.
There you go.
Um what's up on deck for next?
Okay, so there's quite a lengthy list. So elementary, we're working on a new math adoption, so K five. Um and like Bang said, the prices are going up. So like I think our Eureka Math two point O squared that we're looking at is coming in between like one point two, one point three million alone. And that would be for K five. Um at the secondary level, we're looking at math for middle school and high school from sixth grade math through pre-calculus. Um next year, we're also looking at um. Uh sixth grade ancient civilization is a social studies curriculum. And then we are also looking um at um ninth grade health, that's a mandatory half credit class. And then we have E L A for six to twelve grade English language arts the following year after that. But since that's a huge adoption, we'll start just kind of looking a year out in advance. But there wouldn't be any like curriculum cost, we might, you know, pay some after-school work for teachers to. Come in, but that following year that Bang has budgeted. We have a bunch of curriculum that's all expiring at the same time. And so there is like a bubble of curriculum that year, so I appreciate working with Bang and. What we kind of like pace it out a little bit just to make sure that we can afford it. But curriculum is not cheap, like it is, I mean, it is a huge expense for a district and it you just have to have that thoughtful planning in advance, so. Guess I look forward to sharing updates with you all.
Look forward to hearing about them. It almost sounds like one point five million is not even gonna cut it.
So this one point five is for twenty-four, twenty-five. Because this ending fund bands. Twenty-three, twenty-four finished. Then prepare for whatever happened continues on.
That's that's even for the future.
But it depends on her schedule.
Yeah, what we do is um they so like this year, we start looking at the math curriculum. But we don't pay for it until the following budget year. So it's sort of, it's it's awful, you're doing the work the year before you actually pay for it. So that's like with things that like sometimes the numbers you have to look to see. You know, like when you approve like the math adoption this spring, hopefully coming up, the cost of it won't come out until twenty-four, twenty-five. So it's always like a the following year.
Thanks for clarifying that. That's good to know. Thank you.
It threw me off on what's the Holly Heights land purchase for?
We just have to set aside money. If we could use Jennifer left over money to purchase piece of land that for future use, new new school. It's not that area. Yes. Sorry. Then put it right. Yeah.
So for those listening at home, that to clarify, that is land use for a future middle school in Tahali.
Yes, in that area.
We get asked about that a lot, so I just want to make sure people know we've set aside money for a future middle school.
I should have put it right.
Or land.
Well, this this slice I put land pushes, but then the other line slice.
I think it was just the word heights because Tahali Heights Elementary.
Tahali Heights.
Tahali Development. Or a future.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good to clarify.
Thank you.
All right. Can we go to the M S O X?
M S O X.
Funding versus budget allocation.
In here. Yes.
And I've had M S O X described over the years. And I still never can really figure out exactly.
I like nerd rather than M S O.
So I I thought I'd bring it up again, maybe you can freshen my memory and that of everybody else's. What exactly? So you did kind of describe it as contracts, but I have a question like, like what, like what?
Material supplies. Uh operational cost.
It's like for milk, for lettuce, what what kind of materials, what kind of supplies, what?
Everything. This paper pen, you name it for of all the school districts will buy supplies papers.
Critter ink.
Is still considered as a surprise. But then contractual means that we have a lot of maintenance, we have a lot of contract with teachers, special ed have a lot of contracts. You name it, all those contracts.
So the special ed contracts are in this as well?
Yes.
Yeah, those are huge. Those are big ones. For those of you who don't know, we on our consent agenda, we see. A summary of the contracts that are written. Some of these contracts are um. What, hundred fifty thousand dollars, some of them are ninety thousand, some are fifty, some are two fifty.
Some three something, three hundred something thousand.
So they get quite large, so.
Very expensive.
Puts into perspective why maybe our budget allocation is more than what the state is funding.
Oh, the state will never keep keep up with what we spend.
Thanks for the answer.
Yeah.
Anyone else got it before I go on? All right, number four. Oh, so you have, you did a nice job. We, I guess we go back to the general fund projected fund.
Balance.
Yeah.
And balance. Yep.
So you have uh, you know, nine million dollars there, that's the five percent policy. My question is, is that enough to operate the district for a month? If uh all of a sudden the state decided they're gonna be slow with their pay?
Well. If you have only nine million. That you don't have any others, you wouldn't be able to survive as a district size like us. Last time we have four point eight was really low, the time that. Yeah, when I first took over was four point eight, that was not even. One third, probably one third. We cannot make payroll.
You cannot.
We cannot make payroll.
So the the question for that.
The nine million.
On that.
Yeah.
What, what, if five percent is not enough to make payroll, what should the percent be? Six percent, seven percent? It certainly needs to be big enough that we're not sweating bullets.
So you still have the un aside of unbalance there, right?
Right, but we have it now, we may not always have that in the future. But if we have a policy that says this must be set aside in case of disaster. Or in case the state doesn't pay, we can at least meet payroll. Uh and you're telling me that five percent is not quite gonna do it. We're still in good shape for this year, but.
We are.
We we want to build for the future, not.
I understand.
Take it year by year.
So if you you talk about that, there's a lot of school district can't even make five percent like us, right? It depends on the funding and depends on the spending, the need. Um I think five percent is very fair. A lot of people, a lot of school district don't even have that policy. We have the policies because we are very um cautious on our spending. We want to make sure we have some money set aside in case the worst scenario. Um would it go there? Financial management is the key not to let it happen.
Well, I agree, but. Uh we'll come back to this more on the.
Yeah, we can walk.
That certainly.
We had taught.
I don't serve other districts, I serve this district.
Sure, I understand.
So if the other districts don't have that policy or they're struggling.
Uh yeah.
Good luck to them. But thank you for your service to us. All right, number five, and hopefully they get easier from here. Uh back on the challenges.
Uh huh.
So you you had a leave absence is still high. What um? What's, are people sick? Are people taking leave for?
People.
Medical leave because their families ill, I mean, what this is.
Well, you know that we have um law. Especially the P F M L means that the family leave absent, I I mean, uh act. That. People use more. When whatever reason that people need to leave or absent. We don't know, maybe there's still COVIDs existing, even though we don't believe so. But I think people still get COVID. Do during this time or whatever reason, right? Sometimes they have. Um take care of the newborn baby or whatever, because the law. Provide this kind of leave that people can use.
I think the simple answer is privacy, we probably don't know.
Yeah, we do not really want to get there. And it's, you know, legal issue, I cannot even. I didn't even know that why they take leave, actually. Basically, when when we know that we have to pay, I look at the financial statement seeing that wow. We have a lot of substitute costs going up. We have a lot of sub uh employees. So I know that the leave is high, the demand is there, that we need to provide the budget for those. And you know, substitute, we've been doing this. If you hire a substitute, they've they sub. Up to, uh I mean, more than six hundred thirty hours during a year. We have to pay additional thirteen thousand two hundred for sub for sap, for benefit, medical benefit. Regardless, they needed or not, regardless if they have their spouse cover their medical. As district, outside have to pay that thirteen thousand two hundred per one person per year. And if we have twenty. Uh. Substitute that reach that hours, we will pay more than quarter million. Easily.
So the answer is pretty much family medical leave and and.
A lot of variety.
Requirements.
It could be vacation, it could be personal leave, I mean, we don't know, but leave is, you know, that need substitute.
And I can see that the added cost of the substitutes.
Oh, yeah.
Uh medical for Seb adds to the to the cost.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thanks for the answer. Um now, this is your last question, so thank you very much for your your patience with me.
Sure.
Uh you know, you for challenges, you have labor market shortages. Now, this is not a new thing. Uh we've gotten emails in the past from people complaining about the long bus rides.
Um yeah.
Uh that I know the administration has done a lot of creative thing.
Oh, we did a lot of things.
And and you know, things like that. These are things that might, we might struggle with a little more creatively. But could you let us know or maybe somebody else could? What are some of the things that the district is doing to? Get creative, to to fill those positions? Uh because I, you know, there's a certain point where the public gets. Concerned, like maybe we're not doing enough. And this is an ongoing issue, it's not the first time this has been a challenge.
Okay, in general. Labor shortage is everywhere, it's nationwide, it's not just some of the Bonnie Lake area. I mean, not just Washington State, it's nationwide. There's a lot of empty position. Uh after COVID or during COVID. So this is ongoing issue based on, you know, the market right now. But what we have done that charge you accrue. Uh recruit people. Uh especially like bus driver. We have pay for uh. Uh L, what's that, the C D L, we pay for C D L. We pay for uh training. We even have sign-on bonus and referral bonus. I mean, you name it, whatever we do, we increased the bus drivers. Uh contract last time was almost seventeen percent. Historically, you do not see this. I mean, we done what we have done. I mean, what else we can do? It's just, like I said, this is the nationwide issue, it's not just our area. Everybody, every school districts shortage, bus driver, parents. We've been talking with other districts too. It's a common problem.
And I realize it's a common problem and I'm.
But it's still a challenge.
I'm glad that you were able to share that challenge more robustly with people listening or the public to realize that. You're trying to come up with solutions, so their their, you know, their child is not on the bus for an hour or more or getting home very late.
No, we don't want a kid to drive too long, yeah.
Thank you for the attention and thank you for giving me so much time, I appreciate it.
Any other question? We good? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Bing. All right, uh we're gonna move on to um our next recommendation. Regarding that playground equipment installation at the Holly and Crestwood. Uh the administration recommends the board adopt resolution number nineteen twenty-two, twenty-three for the transfer of one hundred thousand dollars from the general fund. In twenty twenty-two, twenty-three to the capital projects fund for playground re resurfacing and equipment installation. Do I have a motion to approve this recommendation? Do I hear a second?
Seven.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next resolution, number twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, is it Gillette?
Gillette.
Gillette, Gillette property. Uh the board and director, Board of Directors, Summer Bonnie Lake School District, authorizing the superintendent to executive. A settlement agreement and associated stormwater easement relating to the stormwater discharge from Crestwood Elementary School over, under, and across Gillette property. The district administration recommends improvement of the settlement agreement with the associated stormwater easements between the district and Earl Gillette. And Patricia Gillette relating to stormwater discharge from Crestwood Elementary School. Do I have a motion to approve this settlement agreement? Do I hear a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion passes. This leads us to resolution on the Douglas property. The district administration recommends the approval of the settlement agreement with associated stormwater easements between the district. And Antoine Douglas and Melissa Douglas relating to stormwater discharge from Crestwood Elementary School. Do I hear a motion to approve this recommendation?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Next resolution regarding the Johnson property, the district administration recommends approval, approval of the settlement agreement with associated stormwater easements between the district and Timothy Johnson and Cara Johnson. Relating to stormwater discharge from Crestwood Elementary School. Do I hear a motion to approve this recommendation? A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right. Uh, next presentation is regarding our safety task force update. Uh, Dr. Two Ament will provide us, um, an update and some recommendations. Welcome.
Hey, well, uh, Dr. Ament's getting his presentation ready. Mary Urbek is, um, the best land use attorney in Washington State. All of your resolutions just passed, and thank you for all of that hard work.
All right, thank you, Dr. Dan, ten members of the board. Thank you for having me tonight. I am going to present a overview and recommendations from the year-long work with our, uh, district safety task force. So outcomes, provide an overview of the work. Provide the board with findings and recommendations from task force, then obviously, next steps moving forward. So before we get started, I just wanna do a special thank you to the board. Uh, for allowing us to do this work and then, um. Board member Richard Hendricks and then board member Paul Williams for their in-depth work with the, uh, um, subcommittees and then also the overall task force. Uh, we had lots of, uh, members, lots of leaders in this district, as you can see here. Special thanks to Kelly Dan, David Brower, uh, Deputy Chief Andy McCurdy. Dr. Larberg, Kyle Olson, David Cuts, Mike Williams, Chris Turner. Sumner Middle School for hosting us on all the large level meetings that we had. Uh, we had four throughout the year. Then all the staff, students, community members, families, first responders were participating. So just a quick review, uh, last July, came back, and the board approved reinstating the district-wide task force to examine these issues related to safety and security. Obviously, we wanted to continue the work that had started in two thousand eighteen. And then, um, invited families, community partners to kind of help examine and, um, you know, uh, improve the existing practices and procedures. And then the other note, of course, uh, when students feel safe, um, it's very clear that there's higher rates of achievement. Connected to board policy and procedures forty-one-ten, um, you know, the task force was, uh, time limited. Often formed for, you know, the, obviously in a short-term assignment, and this was a year-long assignment. Uh, task force is also, you know, volunteer, voluntarily served and then, you know, advisory capacity. The address, uh, clearly defined and submitted recommendations, obviously, tonight, um, to the superintendent and/or the school board. And then final decisions on recommendations and matters presented shall remain with the school board or superintendent. Our connection to the strategic plan, obviously, our, our promise. Where we know value, support every student, helping them to graduate ready with a promising future. Goal two with attendance and safety. Pillar B is safety and partnerships and strategies embedded within all five aspirational goals. And then also embedded within all of our operational goals. Other board policies that are connected, thirty-four thirty-two, which is emergencies. We're really trying to maximize safety for all students in all of our current plans and procedures. Um, policy thirty-two oh-seven, which is our, um, harassment intimidation and bullying policy where. Um, we're really committed to safe and civil educational environment for all students. And of course, our, um, connection you can see is embedded throughout Maslow's hierarchy of needs all the way through. Um, when we talk about all the subcategories, um, that are involved with safety and security. So obviously, myself with the executive lead, um, we really focused on a comprehensive view of safety and security that included, you know, physical, social, emotional health, as well as the physical, um, building plants and themselves. Uh, Deputy Chief Andy McCurdy was very influential in the work and, and doing lots of trainings in all of our sites. As well as being one of the leads in the subcommittees. Um, and then we had sixty-plus members on the overall safety and security task force. How did we accomplish this work? Step one, obviously, we advertised. We're really trying to get, uh, as many stakeholders as possible, as you can see there, from security experts, mental health families. Um, staff to participate. Step two, we formed the task force, uh, specifically designed to examine the school, um, safety, security needs. Step three, enlisted experts and consultants to assist in facilitation of providing feedback. Um, with a, a district-wide audit. Step four, making recommendations, um, for consideration to the board. Timeline is different than mine. So I think it altered, but the intent with the timeline here was, um, there were four major task force meetings. And then you can see their first meeting, second meeting, third meeting, fourth meeting. And in between those large-level task force meetings that encompasses sixty, there were subcommittees that I'll get into. Those meetings happened in between the large-level task force meetings. And again, we're really trying to focus on, um, lots of different aspects, which I'll show here on how we kind of organized all the subcommittees within the overall task force. Before that, on our first meeting, we really wanted to, um, take a look at our belief statement. And, um, here you can see in the blue, those things came out, um, feeling safe for everyone belonging in safety. But go ahead and read the belief statement. The Sumner Bonnie Lake School District believes that every student deserves the opportunity to attend our schools. To feel safe and to learn without the fear of harassment, intimidation, or bullying, no matter their race, religion, sexual orientation, gender identity, socioeconomic status, or ability. We are committed to ensuring that our learning environments are a place where everyone, students and staff alike are welcomed with a sense of belonging and safety. From that, we did a Wordle on our first overall, um, large-level task meeting. Where we're really trying to look at, and you can see with Wordles, the more times that individuals would type in these words. They're a lot larger, and the question that was posed, what are the issues, topics, and challenges that need to be considered when thinking of the safety and security? And you can see training, mental health, culture, communication, were kind of some large-level themes. And you'll see that resonate through the work when you look at the individual recommendations from the subcommittees when I, when I go through those. Here's kind of the organization, um, when we're really looking at safety and security. Is such a broad level of topics that you wanna drill down into. Obviously, um, the four subcommittees, you can see their facilities and technology is embedded, obviously, within all the other topics that are related. Um, you have natural disasters, which you can see the list of things that are involved there. Crimes of violence, and then the mental, physical, and social, emotional are almost collateral with crimes of violence. A lot of times those, those two categories overlap, and you'll see that also in the recommendations as well. On May eighteenth, we had a, uh, stakeholder input meeting on these recommendations. So each of the subcommittees that were formed, I'll kind of show you that on the next slide. Um, and this was just a sample of, of them prioritizing two other recommendations from each subcommittee that you'll be, um, seeing here. And this is that May eighteenth, and you can see the leads there. We had, um, Dave Cuts and Kyle Olson for facilities and technology, Chris Turner with natural disasters. Um, Deputy Chief, um, McCurdy for crimes of violence, and Dr. Larberg for the mental, physical, social, emotional. And then, of course, with our safety audit, uh, Miguel Villarmosa, um, also had some topics that they were all looking at and kind of prioritizing. And they basically rotated around into these, um. The, in a carousel with these, uh, subcommittee groups, and we're looking at all the work that was kind of, um. Completed throughout the year to kind of pri- prioritize the top two. So here's the two from facilities and technology. So implementation of, um, twenty-four-seven Chromebook device student welfare monitoring service with robust real-time alerts. And then obviously establishing building visitor access policy procedures that implement consistent access control management at all sites. Um, and of course, that includes, um, you know, hours, policies for building access and then recommending staff training and messaging to public in the, in that process. Those were the two for facilities and tech. The two for natural disasters, the first one was emergency supply storage containers needed at every building site. And those, these are obviously outside, um, building containers that are, uh, clear lists of necessary contents and processes to keep, um, uh, contents updated. The other of, and you'll see this theme, this comes up a few times, which is standard response protocol, which is a consistent protocol uh, with common language, um, throughout, um, all sites and, um, and levels of communication with the standard response protocol. And then crimes of violence, that's where the, they overlap a little bit. They also reference the standard response protocol. Um, and some other language that, um, that we've been using here in Sumner Bonnie Lake that's consistent with the run, hide, fight, except for using avoid, deny, defend. Um, and then the training and a communication with practicing the plan. And then obviously how is that, um, practicing of the plan is communicated to stakeholders. Uh, the mental and physical, social, emotional health piece with Dr. Larberg. The two there that came out were mental health prevention and intervention, and then creating student purpose and engagement. Um, and obviously, there's, um, there's lots of work that's already being done, uh, with our district. But, um, these are two that, uh, we wanna continue to dive into, um, moving forward. And then the security audit, um, the two that were voted there, uh, was the training and communication, which is again, consistent with um, lots of the information that I, you know, provided in the earlier slides. And then there's a comprehensive audit report that will be submitted to the superintendent by the end of this month, that you'll also have, which is really getting into a lot of granular things and protocols that, um, that are also available to us from the audit. And then moving forward, um, the task force will sunset into District Safety Council. So we're gonna meet two to three times a year. Um, really gonna be looking at data in all these subcategories. And then, um, when you're looking at that data quarterly in these subcategories, you kind of get a sense of what's happening um, with this, you know, areas of, of facilities and tech. Um, you get a sense of, you know, you know, any types of crimes of violence that are happening. And then other safety and security, um, issues that arise, we'll be able to look at that at those quarterly meetings. Um, and then, um, obviously, we're gonna propose that anyone that was on the task force is welcome to be part of the council if they want, moving forward. If they don't want to, that's fine as well. We'll also be advertising for new members. That'll be made available August first. And then the first council meeting, um, with the data that we're gonna be trying to gather will be in December. And then the last piece, moving forward, is onboarding the new Director of Safety and Security. And with that, is a big thank you, obviously, to the board and all the work. There was a ton of work with all of, um. My colleagues and, um, it's really great work, um, and it's, uh, gonna continue. Um, and I will leave that with questions.
Yeah, thank you.
No, that's okay. Um, no, just no questions. I, I really appreciate the work that's been done by the community members and everybody getting involved. I mean, safety is obviously something we wanna prioritize, and, um, it's great to see that ongoing. I'll be looking forward to the data. Um, and what future decision that we made, so it's great work. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I couldn't agree more with everything you just said, and I just appreciate you, um, looking at that communication piece. I think that's something that we get a lot of feedback on too. Um, and so kind of honing in on that and how you communicate and, and have some protocols in place is really good work. I'm also looking forward to that director position. I think that's an exciting move and change for our district too, so, thank you.
Well, yeah, yeah, it's accolades to everybody involved. There's a lot of hands in this and, uh. It's a lot of work, but it's diving into a lot of specifics which is needed, so.
Well, I was on the committee too. You did a great job. I thought the committee did a good job as well. I was glad that we hired, uh, Miguel to come out and do a thorough audit. It's not a question, this is a comment. So going, we heard this many times, just, you know. Looking towards a standard response protocol and keeping the vocabulary the same, no matter what the issue. Earthquake, Lahar, active shooter, fight on campus, didn't matter, keeping the language the same. And one of the things that, um, Andy McCurdy brought up was the new language or the, there's a battle, basically. Between avoid, deny, defend versus run, hide, fight. Personally, I like the run, hide, fight. However, I acknowledge that that particular language does not fit every situation. Uh, it also provides a, a verbal hangup for some people. Uh, they don't like those terms, and if we want our students and we want our parents to be on board and supportive. We need to have, uh, language sometimes that is, uh, gets to the point. Avoid, deny, defend really meets pretty much every occasion. Even with an elementary school student, uh, you can teach him, hey, you can avoid a bully. You can, you can deny them a conversation if they're trying to engage you, uh, to get you to snap. Um, and if it comes to it, you can defend yourself, which is far harder to do if you're using the terms run, hide, fight. So I just wanted to throw that out because I know that people in the community, I can already hear it, why would you change run, hide, fight? There's good reason. It might take some time, uh, but I think in the long run, avoid, deny, defend. Uh, will get just as easy to say as run, hide, fight. Thanks too.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And thank you for serving on that committee, did both you and Rick great. Yeah, thank you guys for your time on that. Um, okay, public records transparency report. There's a summary report, uh, included in our packets. Uh, board discussion. Does anyone have anything for board discussion this evening? No? No? No, Deb?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, our next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August sixteenth. Will begin at six PM right here in the central office boardroom. At this time, in accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act provision for executive sessions. The Sumner Bonnie Lake School District Board of Directors will hold an executive session for the purposes of discussing potential litigation and a performance of an employee. Action is not anticipated following the executive session, and we're allowing allotting. Well, it's up to you guys. Sure, ninety minutes. We are adjourned. Into executive session.